And get tipped off, there might be some action tonight. And of course, you can imagine how widespread that was.
Well, we're waiting on Chris. I, after the 911 board meeting on Friday, I, you all were in meetings, so we tell you about the call Cindy and the exciting news about 911. And I think we just really need to give Eric Carpenter, our director, just, you know, a great thank you for being visionary. I know we've talked about the fund balance that 911 has over the years and what are they going, this is why we have that money, to be able to do something like this. To purchase the, to pay the 25% the county share for the new health department building, is what it is. You read the article?
If the price doesn't go up.
What?
If the price doesn't go up.
We're in the process, well, next step is that Mayor Britton is going to be working with Eric, and we voted on Friday to not exceed the amount, so they're 25%. A little bit of cushion in there, in case something like that does go up out there. But it's a win, it's a three-way win. Usually you say win-win. And I asked Bill.
Did a good step up for 911.
Really well. I asked one thing when we were talking about and discussed this, and Eric's done an excellent job of talking to all of his board members, bringing them up to date. And then he and Rock Lee, who's the director of the city bill. And then that was on Wednesday, on Thursday night, County Commission met, and they, you know, had some questions, what is the middle forward kind of situation, so Friday morning, 911 board voted, and we're moving forward with that. And there will be, there's some remodeling, and we have the ability to do that too. On Wednesday afternoon, Eric made arrangements for the camp, for the city, I mean, for the 911 board to be able to go through the current health department building and see what was there. And so, it's exciting. It's very, very exciting. And you have your ADA, there is no elevator, but you have zero ground entrance upstairs and from the bottom as well, which is a wonderful option there. It's going to be a two-year process at least for that, and it would have been because what the 911 board wanted to do was to, when the jail was built, they would then take the trustees out of that building that was built to be joined where they are right now. And then the 911 board would have acquired that trustee dormitory area and the garage. And so, we figured out that, or Eric figured out, that the cost would be approximately the same, and the time period is the same in upgrading where we are. Dark fiber is already there, that was a big expense, but we didn't know that, and Eric found that out on Wednesday when we did the tour. I asked about cell towers, that was all to find out on Friday, and I said, the only thing I can think of is the cell tower coordinates that I was seeing, Tommy would be an exception for this to be located in downtown where it's going to be.
Yeah, I think, I think we can find a way to make that work. I'm not done with research, but since we need that tower, which is anything, I think we can find a way to make that work.
But where they are now, it's a higher level, unless we attach it to Bob's water tower in his backyard.
Yeah.
And I did find out from MTS, Margaret Norris, and I'll forward that to you Gary, Pat Hardy, is still our MTS representative, he's running in part-time with ICMA, is what he's doing with.
TCMA.
Well, I'm sorry, TCMA. I all dated him, didn't I?
Yeah, that's right.
And so, he's doing mornings with TCMA, and then in the afternoons, he's MTS, so he can still help us with our evaluations for staff.
Okay.
So just call him in the afternoon, he can help you. I think, Tony, I think you're up for evaluation now, because we thought Pat was gone.
Yeah, I, I know that Pat's been working for, for the State Association, but I, and they've advertised for his position with MTS, but I don't think they've come very far on the field.
Sorry to replace Pat.
Well, any items on the agenda that we have concerns with, let's take a look. I was enthused to see, I know that Craig at Parks and Rec has had some challenges with vendors and with our concession stands, and found the perfect solution. The experts who know how to run a concession stand, fan boosters. And we're hooking up, I think that's a great, I thought that was a great outreach by him to make that connection. So that's one of the items we're giving amen to, is the contract with them. We have a number of bids and contracts on here, are hearing that you got questions or any clarifications on, three resolutions and all of this.
I was interested, the road, it said it was going to take about 15 to 16 months, is that correct, Tony?
What's that?
The one behind the landing, is that, am I reading that contract right?
That, that's to get it all the way through completion, so that's, that's the game plan. Our real, what we're trying to do, we've already let, East Tennessee Turf has a contract for this segment that takes it from the roundabout to the back of the parking lot, so we're trying to get it all scheduled where they can do it all at once, and I think that they're, they're on top of that. So, yeah, I think that shortly after we open, the road will be there.
Where are we getting the federal park?
That, that's the road to park.
So when, when will they be able, because in the paper, it said our open date is moved to January 23. That's what you saw in the road review.
Yeah, it's realistically, the, the completion date's going to be early December, but that's, then we're going to need some time to get in, set up, get the system set up. So operationally, in terms of being in full swing, I think county leaders are what we're looking at.
And I ask that because if the road's going to be open, that won't give us enough time, if you're going to take that many months to do it.
No, it's, it's, we're going to press them and see if we can get it accelerated possibly, but this gives us enough time to be, if there's weather problems or other conditions, that won't expire. Yeah, we all want to get it done quickly, and we don't want the new road to be damaged or hampered by the construction traffic that's going in and out as we're getting it done. So it'll be a bit of a challenge to manage, but I think we can get it done.
Do we have to apply for that signal light that we plan to put at the end of veterans' and merchant screen, that connection?
Any, anytime you put up a signal, you'll have to go through a study, approve warrants to TDOT to make sure that it meets the traffic and turning movements to warrant. And Steve, it's two warrants on, on that road.
On state routes, yes.
So there are certain very specific criteria you're going to meet before you can get the green light from TDOT to put up a green light.
Can we ask that to know when we will initiate that process?
At this point in time, it's not on the boards. It's, it's a to-be-done project, it's, it's not, not planned or studied at this point.
Tony, I know that since we're on the topic of the landing, I've seen in your report each week that, and this is a concern that had been brought up, about the coordination between the landing and Parks and Rec, and I see the GGM, or the manager there, Steve, has had some meetings with Parks and Rec staff to start coordination of their program, implementing programs from Parks and Rec there.
Yeah, we've had, to the best of my knowledge, with Parks and Rec staff, two, two sit-down meetings, and we'll, we'll have more to go through. Steve Eaton is the GN, he's, he's working with Andrew and our staff to, to get things going. We'll coordinate that as we get closer to being able to schedule things. Right now, Steve is really focusing on building his team that's going to be, be ready to, to operate the facility and to build relationships with the folks in the community who use the building. And he gives very, very positive reports back on when he's reaching out to the folks in the community. It's a lot of support, a lot of enthusiasm.
And you had asked me once before, when we got in that discussion last time, about funding with the swimming team at the Boys and Girls Club, and that, about contracts with other programs and swimming teams and schools, as I understand, there's no, there are no contracts.
There's line discussion.
It's just been, it's just been telephone discussion. So that's.
Do you think though, that we need to evaluate our priorities of usage in that?
I think we all let the folks retired to run it, run it. That's what I look to do.
I want to go over one that has a quicker impact than the landing, and that is Jolly Park. We need to be ready when Jolly Park opens with the fence along Fred Miller, some kind of access that I know you, is being presented to, to whoever it needs to be presented to through the traffic team study and things like that. It would be, it would be very, very important for us to have it ready when they have the grand opening of that thing.
Yeah. That initial meeting with traffic team to describe what the concerns are and explore options happens this week.
Okay.
Now, there's going to be a lot of legwork to get done, and we'll have to figure out how we're going to do that. And there's, I've got no reports on who's paying for what and where it comes from, but all those, those details will be chewed on and reported out.
Well, I would think streets, having to do with crossing the street would be our responsibility.
It, yeah, it would have been nice to have it as part of the project plans and sort of stages, but yeah, I just don't know where we've kind of run through a lot of our pools of resources. I don't really have a budget yet.
Does the park become a possession of the city of Marchville once it's completed?
That's the intent for it to be dedicated back to the city. You know, they bought two additional lots, and they put the equipment on, on the, on our property, and Lauren, we drafted an agreement, and it is to come back to the city.
Correct, yes.
Employees, they will be employees of the city of Marchville?
That's correct, it will be the city of Marchville.
I think that fence along Fred Miller is certainly a safety feature. I've always wondered from the start, that, that park's going to be so visible in bright colors, and it's in the open, there'd be kids running willy-nilly across that street to get to it. And of course, there, there is a big parking lot that's going to be part of the Jolly Park, but I think we're, safety's going to be the topic of that.
And all the parking will be on the side street.
Right.
The only thing that'll be on.
Jackson.
Jackson Street will be the bus unload.
Or they put the parking lot in there off Pleasant Avenue, it's a driveway cut.
Yeah, that's where, that's where the park.
There's some kind of entrance tower there.
Yeah. At John Jackson, it's just a place to bring buses into, unload?
Yeah, I think it's a driveway insert.
Circle, yeah, circle, but there, there is no park in that circle.
The area you're talking about is pretty large.
Yeah, it is.
They've talked to the church about overflow parking too, in an agreement with them.
Well, I suggested to the fire chief, we just close Jackson Street and just put green space in between the two parks.
How much longer can you have left? Let's look how Clark had to say. Similar reaction.
I suggested a big walkway across the top, that didn't occur.
You did?
Right.
Reach with SARS.
Yeah. Problem with ADA access and bridge, your, your ramp's going to be a long run, yeah.
Start that run back there to church.
And we've already got, used to one up here, full nail.
Yeah.
On the sign for the landing, well, that'll, that'll go up a lot sooner, I mean, it's , it's something they're talking about.
Yeah, we've got to do, it'll, the plan is to put in the media in there during landing at commercial screen, set back far enough that still didn't interrupt the, the turning movements, but we'll have to do some boring under it to get power. There's some, it's more than just building a sign, there's a little more detail to it, but yes, I think that, that will be by the time we open the facility.
Well, back to Jolly Park, there was something about widening the sidewalk, wasn't there?
Yeah, on Pleasant Street, that was one of the, part of the wish list was widening that street so everybody, everyone would know that is the direction you go to go in the main gate.
Yeah, the big things I remember are realigning the crosswalk from the Queen to Two Parks, which is a concern because it's kind of mid-block, and then widening the sidewalk and fence. There's some other signage things, if I remember the details.
How close are you setting the lawsuit out at Lowland is on Stone Water?
We have a trial date.
You have a trial date?
Yes, what, is it April? I believe it's April. I think it's the end of April. Michael Potte is the attorney for the three defendants, wants to depose Michael Potte, and so that deposition is scheduled for two weeks from now. And so maybe that will kind of give some insight and push them to a resolution, but if not, we're set for trial at the end of April.
We were set for trial, I guess, set off.
End of January, yes, the judge had COVID and had to.
You know, I was involved in a lawsuit when the contractor's on the wastewater plant where stealing water, and the state law we found out then was, you can only go back three years to collect. It's gone seven years like it has out here. The case is really about those three years, is that correct?
Well, and I'm representing the city in regards to Everett Hannah, and that, we had filed that lawsuit, I think they hadn't even owed a year when we filed the lawsuit. The other two defendants owe for a longer period of time, but Duane Evans is handling that one on behalf of the city, because of the conflict that my office had. But I believe they're, they're seeking full, I, I can't remember the number of years, but there's.
Well, the judge will sign, the jury, I guess.
The judge will.
Yes, we've been trying to get it resolved and trying to get it to, to, before a judge, and it's been frustrating to get this far, but we do, do have it scheduled.
I understand that changing the agenda procedure takes an ordinance.
That's correct.
And we need to be late to the end of that.
We can draft something up and write it down, let you see, see rough route. Off topic, but since it just popped up in my inbox, Mayor Britton indicates that the library repairs, we talked about gutters, that they will have an insurance claim that will pay 70% of the work. The city and county therefore will only have to split $2,973, so less than we had anticipated.
Sometimes there is good news.
Every now and then.
The, we have tuned in on the, we, we're trying to jumpstart, kickstart from our end of those traffic repairs out there at the entrance to the industrial park at Exode. That's, requires a resolution from us, and the, the, are we getting any feedback on the other, the South Cumberland diet? We've, we're going to apply for that grant, that's one of our resolutions for the South Cumberland reconfiguration.
People don't understand exactly what's going on.
Yeah, I, I.
And I think at some point in time, we need to make a public explanation.
And even after I explained it to my wife, she still didn't understand.
I think businesses feel like they're going to be impacted negatively.
Well, any change, that's the first thing folks look for, is how are we negatively impacted? I don't know how else, Tribune ran a, a large story about it, and we've, was here at the council and presented it as well, but I think the, the description doesn't match up with the pictures. The pictures look much easier to digest than, than words from elected leaders, I think. It's just no surprise, but, but how would you, how would you suggest that we do this?
I think it's obvious to me, it's bad for me, but I, it's very difficult to explain it. But Tony, I talked to someone over at officials, the Health for State of Tennessee, and that grant, when it comes through, it's a long ways down the line.
This is, it's a federal grant, nothing happens quickly with federal money.
And I, I don't know, to me, it's a little complicated to explain how it is. I mean, you've got to sit down, a set of plans, and go over it. I don't see how you identify, like a news. I think it's a big enough project that it probably needs to have a public forum to discuss with people who are interested.
Would know, sure. Well, they had a, they had a public hearing with property owners, and some of the, Tim Oaks, the guy, the construction and the warehouse place up the street, the carpet place, came, somebody with one of the oil companies that owns the convenience store gas station, I don't know who that is now, they came and expressed some concerns and input, and, but I think the ones that, who use that road, and it's especially in the border, coming, if you're dropping your kids off at school, or if you're headed to the TCAT center, or a number of things that, that road is still useful. 160 took a lot of traffic off of it, but it's just, it's just such an ugly looking entrance, and this, this will be a significant improvement.
When you had that meeting, did they have the drawings with them?
Oh, yeah, they had posters all, all around the road, and it was.
Yeah. A lot of detailed work that.
But they brought it to the council meeting when, when they showed it to us that that works there.
A lot of utility work that's going to have to be done there too. See, they didn't identify that, because you could identify everything, it's not easy to identify a project like that without a set of plans. I think the problem too is, people who are showing concern negatively are not the business owners, it's the people who use that street a lot, as you said, to take people to TCAT, Lincoln, or some of those areas through there. Those are the people who are thinking, if there's a wreck, will I be stopped and I'll be able to get my kids to Long Town? Because it's a one-lane direction rather than two. But Tony, it's federal, state, federal state money, is that right? I said, we've got professional engineers designs, right? Well, what else do you do?
And there will be some mediums in that center, but a lot of it's going to be turn lanes, and so getting around problems is something you can manage, but it's hard for people to imagine that something is different. But people that come to town that aren't familiar with it and know which lane to get in, or can go through, you know, it's one of those things, you get in the wrong lane and you suddenly come, come up to a dedicated left turn, and it's, it's not well-designed as it is now, so I think there is an opportunity for improvement and some significant improvement to the way it looks.
I, I don't know of any other place that has ATV sidewalks.
Those are just fat, fat curves.
I think one of the things is the, the plant didn't get on the median, and we tried that over on, what, First North Street?
First North, they ran over them.
It didn't work.
Should have.
Well, cars move too fast for that, at that location.
Well, it looked like, when you, when you first come up from, by the church there, it looked like there was a center lane. So they'd pull over in the center lane, and then all of a sudden, there was an island there. We didn't plant trees fast enough, is probably, if we planted trees immediately, then they could see we could do something.
A real downfall in that project that didn't irrigate those islands, so there was no water out there.
Hey, it was turned down by the council. Can we blame that on Andrew?
Yes, absolutely. If you ever in doubt, blame Andrew.
That probably should have gone ahead, and the tree should have been, the issue there, I, I was, we, I voted against it, and I mean, I voted for it, and the council voted that was slow traffic down, and not, or we couldn't fill that residential later at 85 mile an hour.
You know, when they brought, what was that big piece of equipment that they brought through and had to move all the electric lines, remember?
That was a, that's since been, hours ago, reactor, 224 tires on that truck, on that trailer.
And that's when they took the islands out, and they were going to pay to put them back, and we voted no.
Right.
And then they didn't use them when they got there.
They lowered the lake. You remember that?
Yes.
They lowered the lake to take.
You might talk a little about the resolution on the VSR 343 traffic study.
Oh, that is, that is the study that we're talking about for, for Cumberland. As part of the closing out the project, TDOT requires that we adopt this resolution and say, we've seen the report, we're going to do our best to, to implement the, the plans as we are constrained by, by, by funding, but that's the last stage of the study is the reason we have that, that resolution on the agenda. And then the following resolution is the one to, to seek the, the federal grant to, to make the improvements.
So those are hand-in-hand resolutions?
That, that's correct.
It's been brought to my attention that the road going from Walmart to the apartments over the Culver, or whatever that is that's there, is, is about to be finished, but the design on Thompson Creek has not been done, so therefore, they're going to take that road and just butt it into Thompson Creek Road?
I know there's been conversations about that intersection, and I don't know the details, but I'll find out, let you know.
Because we, we certainly don't need for it to.
I have to do stops out in the corner at Thompson Creek Road?
Yes.
Or a three-way stop or something? The people on Thompson Creek don't want to keep going on Thompson Creek? Or folks coming up street, they actually have to.
I thought the last discussion was that Thompson Creek would turn and go toward Walmart, and people coming nowhere on Thompson Creek would have a stop sign.
The, the last drawing that I recall was, you'd come down from Walmart and be a curve going on, on to Morris, and there'd be a stop sign from the existing Thompson Creek, but I'll, I'll go back. There is a two-headed monster in that, that, the piece on improving Thompson Creek from that intersection back to Morris is just, we're getting preliminary designs right now, so.
So Matt and Craig is doing that design?
Yes.
And I think they think that that's what the holdup is, is they haven't gotten that intersection designed yet, or we haven't?
I know, I've seen a drawing, but I'm not sure of what stage it is and which, which phase that drawing is from, but we'll find out.
I think what we originally stated is the way that it ought to fall, and someone else should not be able to make a decision, that that's not the way we're going to do it, we're going to do it a different way.
We don't need Matt or any Craig, you tell us to put a stop sign in. Who puts, is that the county that puts the stop sign in, or what's?
No, if we, if we change the traffic law, we'll put up a stop sign.
Don't you want to change that, because it's not a 90-degree right-hand turn you wanted to?
Right, it's supposed to be that way, and they, they're having to give up a little bit of each cost property to do that.
But yeah, they're, they're moving along, building the road, bases down on the new leg from the creek up to the shopping center, and they're grading out the widening of the existing road, the two-lane road that would be widened down at the, beside the apartments, so if we can get some good weather, they'll, they'll be moving along or happening.
And the other thing I'm hearing is that those apartments are filling up just about as fast as they get them open?
That's my impression, if once they get a CO, there's somebody moving in on us all the time.
Tony, the piece of land is coming for the planning commission next week, on the West End, where is that located?
There, there's an old car dealership that's now CC Dell, is across the street, is a big open area that's, but it's pretty far west.
On the left?
Yeah, if you're heading downtown, it's on the left.
The 6800 block, which is almost at the Jefferson County, across the Merkwood dealership, and that says 400 to 450 units, 50 per unit.
That's, that's the proposal, is that there will be commercial on the frontage and 400 to 450 units in the rear, right Steve?
Yes.
Do you have a better frame of reference on where it is east or west? Is it DR Horton?
No. It's a group out of Subiriboo.
Oh, okay.
There's some information on DR Horton that we're probably not really aware of.
I can tell you where it is.
Chris Ford?
Information about DR Horton and some houses that he's built, and his, and his quality of housing has been questioned.
Well, elaborate on that.
I'll send you the article.
Well, what does it say?
It says that it's air not up to standard.
Who's, who's standard?
I'll send you the article.
These folks that question other builders' quality usually come from other builders, that's why I wanted, that's pretty common. Steve, the, who decides how to coordinate that traffic where, that Crockett Trace, where that car wash comes in and out? And the new traffic is gonna come up on Street X, whatever we call it, that, that come, you know where I'm talking about?
Right.
That looks like it's gonna be a, a four-way stop for five lanes of traffic. And I wonder that, how, how that, who decides how to manage that?
Well, it will be a four-way stop for three lanes of traffic.
I think there might be a lot of road rage in there if we don't manage that car wash customers. Where is it? Where the new road is comes up to, uh, where do we put the stop sign at the four-way stop? Traffic now, if you go into the car wash, you're gonna, you're gonna come on into that.
You're right.
It, it's gonna be a.
We're taking a lot of their, uh, trading traffic, getting into the car wash there, and they don't have this place anymore.
Well, it, it seemed like the natural stop for the stop sign is where the new road connects to the existing asphalt, which means a four-way stop, but one of them's gonna be offset.
Yeah, I think the, the stop sign will be at the existing intersection.
And even if that traffic gets backed up on through the day.
It's gonna have to be a lot of people who.
That is.
They go ahead and go, let them in. It's not gonna work like it does at Chick-fil-A when you start doing that zipper traffic.
Nobody can back up traffic like the donut places.
Damn, the power's up against anybody.
Today's Fat Tuesday. Did you know that?
Uh, Fat Tuesday, oh, you mean Board of Groans?
Board of Groans, yeah.
I wasn't aware of that.
Your question, what the problem is?
We're not doing a resolution for that.
No, but I, I, we chewed at the fat real well, so I'd like to add one more topic to it. If you hadn't heard that, haven't listened to the fat, let's talk.
Yeah, something I've heard.
Okay. Um, I'd like to talk about the first fire truck and the project that we have that started back in October with Federated Women's Clubs. And I canvassed the council with support for that. And then GFWC has decided to take that on as the project and I shared that with you. And then we had the retreat that was not, that was rescheduled until January. And I showed you some slides and told you, and I acknowledged that Tommy had some questions. So we moved it to the site between the administration building for the fire department and Station One. Initially, uh, we were told, when I talked to, and it was not Clark's idea. I wanna, I wanna just squelch that right now, if anybody thinks that. The idea came out of a discussion with myself and another individual who is not a fire person, a fireman. And in that, because, gosh, when I first came on council in ninety-three, I, you know, went to the NLC and all the guys went that way. And I was here and my husband had gone with me. He said, find your niche, and I did. Women in government and public safety. And when I was running for council in ninety-three, Gary Ryan took me down to the fire engine that they had just bought, apparatus, I'm using his new name. And he showed me that they had purchased it without air conditioning because it was cheaper. So I said, that's not gonna work. And so we would never purchase, I said, if we, if I were on council, we would not purchase another fire engine without in, already installed air conditioning. So I had been, I served on the National Republican Safety Committee from nineteen ninety-seven until a year before last, when I decided not to re-up for that particular committee. So memorabilia, you know, I've always been interested in history, so we're standing there. I've been over there to, uh, talk to Danny Case, who wasn't there. And you know, Danny Case is the one that has really resurrected the fire engine. In fact, I have a history that it goes back to eighteen fifty-five, nineteen sixteen, written by Steve Street. And I've connected city with Steve Street, of the, when the fire department started, eighteen fifty-five Morristown. And that was when it was hand-pulled fire carts. And then he takes it all the way up to the horses in nineteen sixteen, when we had the first motorized fire engine. And Danny Case takes over from there. So we have seventeen pages of history right here. And I have always been interested in history, so we have now, just read an article called Excellence in Leadership. And that excellence says, you've got to tell your story and you must remember it and you must pass it on. Because if you don't remember what came before you, you do not have that foundation to build on and reflect on. Just like Theodore Guild and Encore and everything that Dever works with, there's a history there. Well, I want to, uh, say that the Federated Women's Clubs are not to be taken lightly, nor are the people in this community who support the first fire truck. And yes, I, I, last, after the last council meeting, we met on the fifteenth day after, after your, that was your birthday, wasn't it? We met on your birthday. And after that meeting, I had a chance to come back through after talking to Mr. Chin and talk to Larry and Tommy and Gary. And I told you at that time, I didn't think that the money that we were asking for should go through the budget of the fire department. It should be something that we take on as a city. And Gary, you've done some legwork obviously, cause you sent me an email. And I told you last time that you asked me in this meeting, why I didn't bring something to you. And I said, because your answer is always no and three reasons why. Now you've added a word to that, it's no-go. And you sent that email to Tony and Larry and to Andrew. And I responded, I don't accept no-go. I don't know of anybody else who got that email from Gary, but he is one person on this council. And you made a decision, you know, in part fifty-four, they used to say, the facts ma'am, just the facts. And Paul Harvey says, the rest of the story. Well, you haven't asked for all the facts and you haven't asked for the rest of the story. And the rest of the story is, yes, we knew it was gonna be initially two fifty. I did then run this project by Clark and Danny, who are the two people that are really, you know, the chief. And Danny's been the memorabilia, uh, historian for the fire department. And when we got that initially, doing my groundwork before I came to the council, asked if that could be done for a hundred thousand dollars, if we gave them a budget for that. Well, moving the project, extra excavation and somewhat like this, it's not gonna be able to be done for a hundred, but it's not locked in at two fifty either. It depends on what's gonna take place there. So I asked you for a hundred, told you proposed a hundred, a hundred less, it might be a little bit more. I'm asking the council to, we can do this in phases. We could do it, you know, this year, whatever we can do with the money that you give us. And do not, I said, discount the women in government, the women in GFWC, and the other individuals who support the first fire truck. You called me in fact, even before last, before the fifteenth of January, when we were talking about this. And you said something about two fifty at that time. And you said, what are you gonna do? I said, we can raise the funds. You haven't given us an opportunity to do that. And you said, that'd be a lot of donut sales, agreed. But you don't, you know, the women in, the general, general Federated Women's groups, ladies reading circles, some of the others, the ones that started, initiated the youth emergency shelter. And they've worked on the library and they've worked on other things in this town. So, uh, and I don't know if you, Becky Hodge, don't tell Becky Hodge enough. In fact, Son of Silence has been working and raising funds for the first fire truck since two thousand fifteen. We've raised annually, did a, while we, before COVID, a thousand dollars at each one of our chili launches in January. And we have in our, this will be our fourteenth year of the CIP project, which is scheduled for May the fifth. We generally raise around ten thousand dollars. And most of that does go to the selected nominee that we have chosen to support in the community there. So I'm asking this council to be aware of the fact that, in fact, I've taken, I've just signed up for a seminar, webinar, completed one, then get to do the other last weekend in impasse. And it's called In Search, it's called In Search of performance of excellence in an organization. There's seven points, but I just wanna tell you three of them. The idea is that a journey to excellence is based upon your mission statement. And in Germantown, in fact, because Sharon Goldsworthy was the mayor of Germantown in nineteen ninety-three when I came on it, an excellent resource. What they did was take their mission statement, and they came up with a tagline that they use all day and everything that they approach. Their tagline is excellence matters every day. Our mission statement is, the city of Morristown's mission is to draw from our heritage, to grow our community, and nurture our can-do spirit, our can-do attitude. I think our tagline should be, we can do this. It's not no-go. In fact, in, in this, this, one of the other points is engage your customers, engage your citizens, engage your employees, engage your council. Now, if you say no to everything without finding out the facts, without finding out the rest of the story, and speaking for other people, then you're not engaging. You're bringing a hammer down when you don't even really need a fly swatter. You need to just talk to the people that are involved. And so the idea didn't come from the fire department. The budget is gonna be over a hundred. I'm asking for a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five. Give us an opportunity to do as much as we can with that money and see what we can do with the rest of it. The department is fine with that. We're doing the landing in, in phases. It took us three years after we emptied out everybody and stacked them on top of each other over here in the wing that we're just now getting to renovate. So we can certainly look at this in stages. And our just orders, I in that email in response to you. And you sent it to those three and when I sent it back, I sent it also to the vice mayor. I said, when can you all meet? I have not heard from any of you about sitting down to find out the facts and the rest of the story. And I call that not engaging. And if I feel that way, and I'm a council member, I can certainly identify with how some of our citizens feel. So I'm asking you. I'm, I'm just saying, it's not a no-go. We're going May fifth. The ads are out, the publication is going, we have the history, we have a story to tell. And we're gonna tell it.
Well, in response to that, and the rest of the council heard your presentation at, at the planning retreat, said, we can build this for a hundred thousand dollars. But as far as not getting the facts, we have an architect, we had a construction manager, and we had the folks that you met with who told you the very bare minimum was gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand. And now that number's been bumped up even more. If the council wants to spend a quarter of a million dollars to build a museum for a fire truck, then council will vote to do so. But I think we've got a number of things that the fire department is requiring money for.
Who's your, who gets you to talk to the construction manager?
Well, the contractor that you met with, we had Eddie Thor, and met with Eddie Thor's person and the fire chief. And, uh, you know what we're talking about, I might like you don't know, where the numbers came from.
They came from the fire chief. I didn't meet with anybody.
Well, it's not my understanding. We might need to get a little closer to the truth, but, uh, it's, uh, the rest of the council to address it. But if you're telling us, I want, I want your, your support, something that's a hundred thousand, and we say, okay. And then all of a sudden it's two hundred and fifty, and that's a minimum.
Then can we have the meeting you, I asked for? Can we have the meeting I asked for?
This is what we're doing now, isn't it?
If you, you put down the administrators. Nobody in that meeting said, how can we help you? What can we be involved with? What are the next steps?
Well, I think you like, you wanna make your pitch to the council members to, and challenge them to tell you no face to face.
Do you all think that we can do this in phases?
I think we shouldn't give it up, that's for sure.
Yeah, I wasn't like, give it up, but let's do something we can afford or is responsible. Let's not do just irresponsible money grab of a quarter of a million dollars.
That, that's coming because we're not working together on this thing. But one thing I like to point out about that, ours, fire truck, when I was with you building it, the, the school system would call and want us, uh, send some of their children down the life of the school year to go through the water plant, see how it operates. Well, that fire truck can be a huge convenient advantage that the children in school can go to and see it wherever we put it. Because some of those kids are interested in it as you go. And some of those kids can't get around to different places, like some of the kids' families can take it. So I don't think we should give it up by any means.
Yeah, I don't think you should give it up either. And I see the historical value, but when you first approached me, and I told you why, that I did favor a shelter, that where it would be visible and kids could come see it, let's display it, it's historical. And, and all of those things, uh, all of a sudden, this changed into a multi-classroom museum.
No, 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 it's not a multi-classroom, you didn't. The classroom is in the administration building we rebuilt. What does no-go mean, Gary?
Means I don't think you can go, the way you're proposing, you'll have to come up with a different kind of.
And had been invited another level of discussion before you sent me a second email and said, um, you didn't think anybody else would agree that they would all say no there too?
That's what I think, you could do your own blog and I guess.
Let me just say this, I think, I think it's a good idea to have, uh, uh, something for the kids, as Bob said, to be able to see and see the history of Morristown and what the fire truck means and everything. I think the question we have here is funding. I think what we have to do, and what I personally would like to see, is that whoever it is, whether it's the, your women's circle, or if it's a rugby club, or the quannas club, or whatever the deal is, in any project that we have, bring the idea of that project to the council and say, here's what we would like to see happen. And this is the way we'd like to see it done. We'd like to see it done in phases. We'd like to see a hundred thousand dollars come from the city. And then we will raise the money this way, this way, and this way. I think what I'm hearing you two have a contention about is whether the city should be saying, here's what you gotta do, or the people who are wanting to support the fire truck in this place, saying, here's how we can get it done. So in my opinion, I think Case Group ought to come to the city council, not to Tony or the mayor, but come to the council with an idea of, here's how we can do this and it not be a major impact on tax dollars in one year. Because even though you all have got the, the project of the fire truck, which is very, very important, I don't want anybody to think it's not important. But I also have that same feeling toward this stage, that we need to move all around to all the different parks and places that we could support it. Because I think, in my opinion, it's an embarrassment to have a tent and have some kind of big festival and have a tent that the band plays under, which can be used a lot. So my point is, if we spend two or three hundred thousand dollars on this, then that kills my idea of what I like to see happen. So if I come with a project and how it can be funded, you come with a project and how it can be funded, then we can probably come to an agreement on how it's gonna be done.
I think that's a better plan than, than where we are at the moment.
I don't think we're, I think we need to go.
Well, it's never saying no-go yet.